The pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we come together as the county commissioners. First off, we give you thanks for the blessings you have given us. The farmers, including myself, had a fantastic wheat crop. We give you great thanks for that. A lot of us have received moisture in the last couple of weeks. We give thanks for that. Continue to ask for your blessing for rain in this region, Lord. Be with us as county commissioners today. We have a kind of a busy agenda. We appreciate your advice and your wisdom. Help us guide it, guide us in our decisions. Most of all, Lord, be with these people in this room, protect us, bless us, and grant us joy in our lives. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dwayne. My comments are, first off, welcome to those who are here. And, morning Bob. And also welcome back our county commission folks that were busy last meeting. And so we're glad to see the full, the full meal deal here this morning. So with that, we have a consent agenda to consider, and I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent agenda. I did have some comments modifying the minutes, but they were very small changes.
Okay, we have a motions or a second?
Second.
Okay, now Bill, your comments?
No, I provided them to the county clerk and Dory's taking care of that. They were minor, minor comments.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries. Our regular agenda, do we have a motion to approve it?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That also carries. Public comment, this is the time for those who have something they'd like to share, something they'd like to comment on that is not on the agenda. So, anybody? I want to solicit a comment from Mr. Kreitzer. Bob, if you don't mind, would you step up to the, to the podium? Because I have a question. It's not on our agenda, but we wonder when it will be. I understand there are confidential needs for certain developments. But at some point, we need to discuss a sewer district. And, and then ask, when's that going to be on the agenda? And I'm not quite sure who puts that on, whether you folks do, whether we do. But we need to hear from a couple of folks that were, were, Steve was, Steve was going to ask some engineering figures, for example.
Yes, sir. We have two particular areas that are considering, that are in the county, that currently do not have a sewer district situation. And as these proposed developments come forward, as there's one on the north side of town that an individual has an option on a property that will go through a period of time. And during that period of time, we have to do our due diligence to say, all right, if this was developed, here's what would have to happen. And from a county standpoint, it would involve a sewer district because there is no service in that area. Alternately, there's a place on the west side of town that has the same thing. And in each case, we believe it involves an engineering study. Because it will impact eventually what will be expected of the county in terms of serving those properties. And at this point in time, I think the impetus would be to be able to find in some pocket of the administration or whatever, the ability to fund the engineering required. So that you would know down the road what commitment that might be. And it would just be the engineering study, and I believe those are in the $20,000 range, to know what would happen. And, and I think if we do this once or twice, then we will have a, a method and a tracking potential that we could use in future areas as it goes forward. But at this point in time, we've tried to keep the commissioners and the administration aware of what we're working on and how it impacts you, and then ask you to make a decision to allow us to go forward. We're more than willing to handle the interaction between the engineering, the developer, and the entities that are there to try to come up with what a proposed exposure on your part would be. But we don't want to start that without your approval.
And I, I don't mean to put you on the spot here without, without a heads up, but I appreciate your comments. But it seems to me that we need to somehow figure out, okay, it's now time, or it is not time, to put that on our agenda and let's, let's address the engineering studies that you're talking about.
Yeah, as long as we can maintain the confidentiality between the location, the developer, et cetera, that they are binding us to, we have no problem with that. We judge at this point in time that by submitting it, you know, in writing, et cetera, to your team, that, that would be sufficient. But if we need to put that on the agenda, we'll certainly be willing to put it to the clerk and bring it forward.
Well, Robert, I'll turn to you. Which one of us need to put it on the agenda that's their project that needs our help?
Well, if it is, if it's the request for a, a funding and engineering study, we'll probably need to, we'll probably need to have that in the, well, are, are both land properties, they have options on them? Are they, one owned by one and?
One is owned by an individual entity and the other has an option to purchase that will expire at a given period of time. And it's a little more complicated because it involves another parcel that's parallel.
Okay, the one that's owned, if it's, if they are moving forward on that rather quickly, well, then we should, we should probably move forward on that as well, rather. Quickly at some point in a commission meeting.
Yeah, I took it, but one of.
Okay. All right, we will bring forth, I'll get with Lana, and we will bring forth that information to Robert and the clerk and, and put it to your agenda.
Let's get it on the agenda and get it considered.
Yeah, because it, it would certainly help, so.
I think we have a question or so here, so.
Yes.
Just a comment. I went to the city pre-meeting two weeks ago after our last meeting. And they're planning to set aside some of their American Rescue Plan to look at comprehensive water policy. And, and I think we need to have a more comprehensive sewer study of all of our three existing sewer districts. So I think as we work on use of the ARP monies, that is appropriate.
I think that would be an excellent application of those funds. Because it could be a one-time set of money that wouldn't have to be paid by property tax owners.
All right, anybody else have a question or a comment for Bob? Bob, appreciate your service. Thank you for your comments.
All right.
Anybody else in the audience have a public comment? Do I need to reach out and appoint somebody else to come to the? No other public comment, we'll move right along then. On our business items, our first order of business by the agenda is an appointment to a nominating committee for the 25th Judicial District. And this is to replace a longtime committee member who unfortunately passed away. This is to replace Tom Walker on that committee. So we have a, if you will, a nominee, we have a person of interest. And so I'll be, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before I make the motion, it's my understanding from Jerry Schultz, well, when he presented to us, that there had been some reaching out from the attorneys and others to search out this non-attorney member of this commission. And they did find that Walker Frye was interested. Walker Frye did submit a formal letter requesting consideration. And he's a Garden City person, and this needs to be a longer-term commitment. And it appears that Walker would be able to fulfill that. Therefore, I do nominate, or excuse me, move to assign Walker Frye to this commission.
Okay. The motion second, any discussion?
I know him personally, and I think he's an exceptional candidate for this position. As you know, it's a unique spot, and serving on this means you have no political ambition. And he's likely to fit that well.
That will be me in a year or two. I'll have no political ambition. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of nominating Mr. Frye say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? He has now been selected, so thank you. Linda, resolution 07-2021, adopting a smoke-free workplace.
Thank you, commissioners. I know I was not at the last meeting when we first discussed this. However, I hope all of you have had a chance to look at this. The main crux of why we are revisiting this issue for employees is the advent of vaping, which of course is a new, a new item that wasn't previously thought of or considered for the employees or what that would mean in the workplace. And so that's one of the additions. I think to point out some other additions, we went ahead and added smoke-free tobacco, that was not in the original, and that was passed in the 90s. That was not in the original employee policy. And then finally, in the original employee policy, there was no ban on smoking in cars, which seems like an oversight, especially for county vehicles and for long-term, you know, being able to resell those. Sometimes that can affect value and affect other people who get in the car after another person. And in general, the purpose of this is to promote the health of our employees here at Finney County. And so I open it up to questions if you have any questions with regard to the resolution.
Questions? We cannot act on this without Donna Gerson, or at least waiving, because she's been.
Yes, and I do, I do appreciate that. I, I did ask Donna to be here this morning. Of course, she's advocated in her community for a long time to push for the health of our community through minimizing the use of tobacco wherever possible. And we appreciate her showing up here in case you had any questions about whether or not tobacco is bad for you. She would let you know.
Okay, I'd accept a motion.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution 07-2021.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
Give it to Bill.
Motion and a second, and any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That carried. Thank you. Now, Linda.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're still on the.
I know, I was going to say goodbye to Donna.
Oh, okay. I didn't mean to.
Yes, no, no, I was, I was just going to thank her for her presence here.
It says that you have something else for us to consider.
That's correct. I, I can't remember when we, when was that meeting? In May, May of 2021, we did approve the amendments to the Finney County zoning with regard to what's colloquially known as mother-in-law quarters. But we're kind of fixing that wording to be guest houses. Basically, any residence that's sort of smaller on the same utilities as the previous house within the county. And I know that you all are aware that we've had some people requesting waivers previously. So this is something we've already discussed. And I would ask for the approval of this going forward.
Mr. Chairman, before approval, in section three, item four, 22.030, item four still references mother-in-law. And I thought we were just using guest house in everything. But it still has that language in there. And I, I personally would, would suggest that we leave that out and just have guest house everywhere in the document where it's appropriate.
I, I don't, I'm, I worked with the Planning Commission on this. I'm wonder, and, and I had the same thought, Lon. I'm wondering if part of the reason they aren't doing that is so that it comports or matches a little more closely with the city zoning regulations? That's my guess, but I don't know that for certain. But I don't have a problem with striking the mother-in-law quarters. I think we've defined it as guest house. And I think, as you said, that makes a lot of sense going forward in helping people understand what those are for, that it's not, not always your mother-in-law.
Right, well, I just think anyway, it's only one family member, and we're talking about family or others. It's in 22.030 and section three, item four. But I just think. Right, but I just think we should say guest house. And then in the second sentence, it must be continu, connected to existing utilities. And it, but it's still a guest house. I, I just think that's been our intent, and I think we should put our intent in writing.
No, I'm, I, I know exactly what he's talking about.
There's a way to address this, Lon, if you'd like to offer a motion to have that language changed?
That would be my motion to amend it in that part of the document. And with that amendment, I would move that we approve this resolution.
Let's first get a second on your.
Oh, on the amendment, okay, that's fine.
Is there, is there a second to his amendment?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? If not, let's vote on it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? That carries now. I'll entertain your motion, Lon.
Yeah, sorry about getting out of order, Mr. Chairman. And I would move that we adopt the amended resolution 10-2021.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, my motion's second. Now, discussion? You may ask your question or whatever.
I'm looking through this or reading through yesterday. I was, if, if you're in the rural part of the county where there's no public water or public sewer available, you can't do this at all? Or is it just, you know, it says your guest house may be permitted on property that are connected to municipal water and sewer. Well, if you're out in rural part of the county, you have neither. So does that mean you can't do it in the, those sections of the county? That's a question.
I think we go back to the acreage restriction in the county. If you have 40 acres or more, you are exempted.
I, I think that's right. I'm, I'm sorry, Alicia is not here today. I told her she didn't probably need to come, but maybe she should have. But the intention, of course, is to, to allow for the guest houses so that we don't have to do the waivers in the future. And so I think you're right, it's an acreage, going to be an acreage issue.
Well, the one we declared to clear out in the spring, so they have neither one.
And they, they use maybe the common water, but they each have their separate septic.
And that was approved, right?
Yeah, we, by waiver.
We gave them waiver.
Yeah, so.
They did not meet the acreage thing that I was referring to.
Let's vote on this or table it one way or the other so that we.
That's fine. I, as long as, you know, people will be able to do it, if they, you know, go through all the steps.
Okay, then, any other discussion? All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Linda, would you kind of look that over, though, when you have a spare moment? And see if there needs to be a restructuring on the utility part of that?
Yes, I will do that, absolutely.
Thank you. Larry Brungardt. You have something for us about Jenny Barker Road?
Yes, I do. I have update on Jenny Barker Road. I was talking with the city last week, and their update is, is 99% complete. Permanent traffic control is in place, and they've, have it open to traffic. The only thing they're working on right now would be a punch list, a little bit of cleanup. The contractors are cleaning up the final, what, little bit they have there. And the county has taken over, our portion of the, the side roads is taking the maintenance back over that they were taking care of when they were building it. There's no action required. I just wanted to update you that it is open. And speed limits are back to 40. You can see on the, on the video that it's ready to go.
I'm still amazed at how accurately our team, Adam or whoever flies that drone to take these pictures.
Yes, that helps, that helps a lot there to see the progress on it and how nice it looks. So like I said, we've taken over the maintenance on the side roads. And so I'm not sure as far as I need to get with Adam, with the city, with Wilson for the city limits, the county limits on, on the road itself. I can't tell you that right now for sure, but I will get with them so we know where our maintenance ends on that also.
Okay, any questions? You go ahead.
The grassy, the, the ditches and so forth, has that happened yet?
Yes, that, yes, that's happened, yes. The meeting I had the last. Yes, that, yes, that's happened. Yes, the meeting I had, the last meeting I was in with them, they had the contractor doing that as well. Like I said, last week when I met with, with some people from the city, they were telling me that it was 99% complete, just working on their punch list to clean up.
Okay. Let's go first to Bill.
Yes, I mean, this is something I campaigned on, so I'm really happy to see it come to fruition. And I look forward to a ribbon cutting or ground baking. I know I talked to Robert about that, and a photo op. But more importantly, and it's not your purview, but I think, I hope we're talking to the city about a traffic study at Jenny Barker on 156. I think once school starts and traffic picks up, that signaling at that intersection is very important. I know we're, that's what we're waiting on, but I don't know when the city's going to ask for that study.
And I'm not sure on that either, but I will find out.
I'm sorry.
Larry?
This is not in regard to this project, but where are we on the, did we let the bids on the farm land?
Yes, they, that's, that, we let, and it was Smokey Hill LLC.
Were they under or over engineering estimates?
Over by, we need to find about 300 and...
They were under than the estimates.
Well, under the est...
Yeah, they were under the estimates, but as far as funding, both the city and county each will throw in an additional approximately $400,000 each. And we have that identified out of special highway fund for our $400,000. Yep.
Secondly, I want to compliment you on your work in parallel roads west of the Hope Lake, through the San Yums.
Yes, okay, I will let Pat and his crew know that.
That is amazing. It's, that road's been in the irony of that for years.
Yes, it is.
I had some comments, though, on Pete Smith Road and some others down there. And I know those old San Yum roads are just hard to maintain. They get low and the sides get high.
Right.
Water comes up on them.
All right, well, I appreciate that. I will let Pat and his crew know. All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next up, Dory, some kind of a report on special elections.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know that mail ballots went out last Wednesday, so we sent out about 155 so far. Early voting starts today. It'll be Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We are going to have a vote on Saturday, July 31st, and that will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So just wanted to, to let you know what those dates were. Early voting will end on August 2nd at noon, so that's the date of our next commission meeting, actually. What I need from you guys today is to determine what date we will be able to do the canvas. So that canvas has to be done on a business day, and it has to be done within the 13 days following the election. The 16th would be our next meeting after the election, and that is the drop-dead last day. So we can do that, or we can have a special canvas session, like on the 9th or another date that you, you choose.
Yeah, I plan to be here on the 16th, yes.
You want to do it on the drop-dead 16th?
We can.
You'd prefer not?
I think it'll be okay. I, I don't anticipate any issues, so...
We'll be, go ahead, Bill.
Good for me, too, 16th.
It'll be interesting with that, the only issue that they're voting on to see what kind of turnout we have.
Exactly. I said exactly. And I'll, I'll keep you posted on how early voting's going.
It's kind of hard to get folks excited to go for one item, so we'll see. Okay, thanks, Dory.
Okay, we'll do the 16th, and that'll be at 8:30 a.m. Is that acceptable? Okay, so the first part of that meeting, you would, we would review the provisionals, and then we'll have to recess and go downstairs and process those, and then come up and complete the canvas. So might take an hour and a half or so. Thank you.
That's it? Board governors, counting set. Is there anything we need to cover today or that we should cover? None? Then let's turn to our county administrator for, for on his activities.
We do have a budget work session immediately following your meeting today to go through that. Also, on the 22nd, so you do have community presentations for Neighborhood and Development Director. That starts at 1:30. You have one at 2:30 and 3:30. And that's over at City Hall. That is for that, refilling of that position.
Can you repeat those three times again, please?
It is 1:30, 2:30, and 3:30 on July 22nd.
On July 22nd?
Correct. Yes. Had a couple of presentations last week in Holcomb, one for the Rec Commission and one for the school district. Thought went very well, very informative. Appreciated the time in front of them to talk about the spill stacks. I've finished the RFQ, Request for Qualifications for Guidance on the ARPA Funds, the, for a consultant on that. If you recall, we used iParametrics for the Sparks Grant, and so we'll be publishing this Request for Qualifications this week, and should have a recommendation for you the following meeting, August 2nd, I believe is when that is. And that concludes my briefing, subject to your questions.
You have one more set of interviews for a position out on the 29th, right? Is that...
I'll look at Kelly on that.
Yes.
Four candidates on the 29th that we will interview via Zoom, first round interviews. And then we may do a couple in person after that first round, and that'll be for the Health Director.
Yeah, so things are moving along, although maybe not as rapidly as some would like. But thanks, Kelly.
The 27th, we have three inter, three interviews for Fairgrounds Coordinator, and those are in-house.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, sure.
We're gonna have everything filled up and be, be good to go. Anything else, Robert?
No, sir.
Linda?
Just a couple of things. Just following up on our last commission meeting, we are meeting with Pierceville and Huber Sand. Lon Pishney plans to attend, and I believe Leonard Hitz from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Just sounded like that was what everybody needed. Alicia Charles over at, you know, the, the Planning Office requested that I do that, that I set that up because she wanted their office to be able to maintain their neutrality going forward on all of that. So I said I could do that, so we have. That'll be tomorrow. One other thing Larry asked me before the meeting about Northwest Industrial District and where we were at on that. I have drafted a joint agreement. Looking through the statute, it appears that you need to have a joint meeting between the County Commission and the Industrial District in order to do the dissolution. So we'll plan on doing that at the next commission meeting. Should just be a really short little joint meeting where you can adopt the resolution, dissolving that if that's where everybody's at.
I believe there are four or five members, but only one that lives here locally, right?
There, there were four or five members. I know Lana Duval was, she and I were coordinating, trying to get me in touch with whoever needed to appear at this meeting. So we're still working on that, but I think we've gotten enough time to get that done.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Board reports. I'm gonna jump down and start with Lon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several things that have gone on that I've attended, many of them with regard to candidates, Derek Schmidt and, and Stephen Johnson and others who have been out here in this area, and Tracy Mann and Senator Marshall in the last week or so. The, our counselor has mentioned the, the meeting that I'll be attending tomorrow. Hopefully come to some agreement with regard to Pierceville and Huber. The meeting they have with the Board of Zoning Appeals is at 9 o'clock Wednesday morning, so we're cutting it short, but there's been some reschedule issues on that. Tomorrow morning, I plan to represent us, and I don't know if others are going at Emma's House. Robert had sent out a note, or somebody had sent out a note, and I plan to be there at 8:30 tomorrow, representing the county if, if others plan to attend as well. And Wednesday, Chamber Breakfast is Wednesday morning, if anyone can attend, Board of Zoning Appeals. And then I have Convention Visitor Bureau that afternoon. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, I think I mentioned to you last time, I will not be at our meeting on August 2nd due to a family commitment, but I will be here on that next one for the canvas and so forth.
Thank you, Lon. William?
I attended both Congress of Man's and Senator Marshall's stops here last weekend, this past weekend. Very informative for both of them. Fair Board meeting was very long, very productive. These folks are very dedicated. We're gonna have a very smooth running fair. They double-checked about everything they could think of on that meeting, and so they are ready to go. And then lastly, I presented the sales tax issue to the San Jose Food Club meeting, the Berkeley meeting.
Bill?
Had a busy two weeks. Made a sales tax presentation at the GOP meeting. Certainly got some pushback from Americans for Prosperity, Rob Fillion, who attended, and I know they've been meeting on that issue. Tended the city pre-meeting. I mentioned they are going to do some set aside of their American Rescue Plan monies for a lot of their utility infrastructure, but Mike Muir had specifically approached me about water and possibly looking more comprehensively about, for water solutions outside the city limits, which was interesting to hear. So we might be considering that. The city meeting also, we, I spoke about the sales tax as well. Heard from citizens regarding roads in Southwind. I need to talk to Larry. Some people want speed bumps, other people don't want speed bumps, so I'll keep everybody equally unhappy. As you heard, we've had a lot of political activity last week. I did attend events for Stephen Johnson and Derek Schmidt, had dinner with Senator Marshall on Friday night, and we had a very good Patriots summit here. I called it the Laura's Political Action Conference, LPAC. But there was a gentleman speaking about election integrity, and I wonder if we might give our county clerk the connection to Charles Cherry.
He has that information.
Okay, she does have the information, because it was really a drill down in the weeds about who exactly can get connected to those computers and IP addresses. And I, I was pretty amazed. So, and I know that, you know, the Secretary of State is, is aware of these issues, but Mr. Cherry has certainly drilled down and found some facts which, which I found to be quite alarming, frankly. And I'm, I'm not alarmist, alarmist. The talk really was about integrity of elections begins with the county clerk, and I think our, our clerk has done an excellent job with, with the elections. I've been to many of them, and I thank you for maintaining the integrity. It's interesting that you only have 150 mail ballots, because the last election you had 800 or something, or how many?
No, I think we were closer to 2,500 to 3,000.
My address, may you. So it's a little quieter this time. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Larry?
Well, I, I attended most of the aforementioned political meetings. I'm glad they're done. I don't know if I could afford any more weeks like the last one. Yeah, checkbook gets a little warm. Also spent a morning driving around sand pits and prospective sand pits with Leonard Hitz, and that was interesting. It was between the sand pit discussion and old-time discussion, it was, it was a well-spent morning. Other than that, that's about all done. I've got a library board meeting this evening. We're talking about, about our internet connections, and I already spoke to Doug about them, and so I think we've got them under control.
Thank you. You all ready for a long list here, Dory? I attended the city commission meeting after our last meeting and ordered to give moral support to Bill in case he needed a character witness. Also attended the, the ribbon cutting at the Nazarene Daycare, and they now have their fire marshal's license, and they have their staff. And yesterday, it was announced officially that on, on August 2, they're opening the doors and accepting young folks. So that's great. I had a phone call I want to tell you about because it was an unusual one. My home phone has a anti-robos system on it. When somebody calls my home phone number, a recording comes on, and it asks them to give their name, and then they have to push the pound key. Computers don't do well pushing pound keys, so I skip all kinds of robocalls. But I got home, and I had this message from John from dot, from dot gov. And I thought, is this a robocall or what? But I, I had a voicemail, please call back. So I called, and I, after talking to a handful of people, let me tell you what this is. You remember, we, we signed up for an email address where it'd be finneycounty.gov. And they, this is a federal bureaucracy for you. In order to, to implement that, they have to call somebody's telephone that's, that is on record. Because I said to the lady that I got in between me and John, here's my cellphone number, and she says, is it listed? No, not, not for the public. Well, that won't work. Had to be something that was listed. But anyway, I got ahold of John, and, and I told him he must work for the federal government, anybody that, that had to go through all of that in order to implement a webpage. The, I, I did attend with Robert, the Holcomb Rec, and the Holcomb School Board, the tax, sales tax presentation meetings. And then Larry, we checked out the thirsty dog and had a good hamburger. And then I presented the next day our sales tax at the Lions Club. And then I had a, attended the Planning Commission meeting, had a couple of county items that are just plats, they'll be, they'll sail through. So that's it for meetings. While we're here, I want to discuss right quick the fairgrounds, I'm sorry, the fair, our table for Saturday, the 24th. And, and I have a phone call here waiting for, from Ron over Holcomb. They're going to have some people there. The city, according to Matt Allen, is going to try to have people. And, and my vision is if we could have a couple county commissioners there at a time through the day, and a couple city commissioners, a couple from Holcomb, and then as people come by, we may, most of us may know some of them, hand them one of the brochures and see if they, if we have their support for this effort, or if we need to answer questions. So at this point, I'll turn to our fellow commissioners and say, Larry, you said you could be there in the morning?
I'll volunteer 9 to noon.
9 to noon, okay.
I, I'm out of town this weekend.
That's not a good excuse.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Anybody else for 9 to noon? You, I'm sorry?
I'm out of town.
You're out of town, too? We're gonna have to have a new election here.
I'll do it, I'll do it via Zoom if you like.
I could be glad to. Glad to do, glad to do whatever.
9 to noon.
Whatever's needed.
If you'll do 9 to noon, then I'll do the, the noon to whenever. And maybe I can get Robert to come and join me or somebody. So are you available Saturday afternoon?
Yes, I think I am.
Okay, we'll, I got that taken care of. Okay. Well, I got that taken care of. That said, we're at the end of...
Dave, I got one more thing I want to add. I did a radio or public, High Plains Public Radio, is that... Yeah, that's correct. High Plains Public Radio interview with a young man, talked to him about the history of Garden City a little bit, and he wanted to know the effects of IBP coming to town and those type of things. And so I don't know when it'll be aired or what will become of it, but he was from Hayes, and it was interesting talking to him about the difference in the communities since he was from outside of the community.
It came to town in nineteen eighty, didn't it?
Yeah.
I remember it well, because we had people camped out, sleeping on Main Street, under bridges.
I remember they were camped out in roadside parks.
Yeah, in roadside parks, could not find housing.
I volunteered Commissioner Clifford to interview with him, too, so...
Okay.
He hadn't called you.
All right. Anything else to come before this part of our meeting? If not, then we're going to adjourn and take a ten-minute break as we move back to the Carol Brown Conference Room for a work session dealing with budgets and folks. And so we invite you to come and participate, so.